I grab different things from different places.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Madam City Clerk, so no, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So that's the first item on the agenda, and then the second item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Inspiration, and I am designated to do that tonight, so if you are able, could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight is my last full meeting as mayor, and over the weekend, I took some time to reflect on the past year, as well as my years on council. I won't take this time to review the achievements and challenges of the past year. If you want to see that, I encourage you to watch The State of the City, which is posted on the city's website. But what struck me over the weekend is the importance of civic engagement. For anyone following my comments, you'll realize this is not something new for me, but something I've advocated since being elected, and in fact, has been an important driver throughout my life. I did a little research and found an article by Dr. Mudassir Siddiki, the president of the College of DuPage in Illinois. I've borrowed very liberally from this article from our reflection tonight. Civics can be thought of as three interrelated concepts: strengthening our understanding of democratic knowledge, cultivating civic skills, and fostering civic disposition. Our knowledge encompasses the historical and institutional foundations of our communities, our state and the United States, as well as the ongoing evolution of its democratic ideals. Civic skills refers to the capacity to weigh evidence, reason ethically, and deliberate respectfully. Civic dispositions, empathy, tolerance, and open-mindedness are moral sensibilities that sustain democratic life. We must view civics as a process that will continue to encourage all of us to think critically, act ethically, and care deeply. In an era of cynicism and polarization, our institutions, such as our city council here, are among the last public spaces where dialogue across difference can occur. We must protect and expand these spaces by modeling what it means to reason together, to listen, to serve, is one of the reasons why it is such a sincere honor to serve with my incredible colleagues, the dedicated staff, and engaged community. The work of democracy is ongoing. It takes place not only in legislative chambers, but also in classrooms, libraries, and community partnerships. It happens every time citizens deliberate respectfully or choose service over indifference. Thank you. With that, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
President.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Christine Lowe asked to be excused from this evening's meeting, and you do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, do we have any supplemental information regarding agenda items?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Clerk's office would like to announce that the agenda was amended to Item 7A Presentation B to include Troop 110, as well as Troop 373, which was posted previously when the original agenda was posted last week.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, we will move on to reports from the mayor and city council. Who would like to start this evening?
I have a quick one. On December 6th, I attended the Winter Wonderland downtown in Kirsten Court and got to see Santa, and just grateful for the chamber and city staff that we have, we have an ongoing event like that. There were vendors there. You know, I think the chamber is trying to do a better job of figuring things out. When I was there, it wasn't as well-attended as it had been in past years. I don't know if it was earlier. I got there kind of when Santa was there, a little later. But it was great to hear the music. It was great to see people out there enjoying our town. I did not attend the senior commission meeting that happened last week as well. I had to work during that time, it's at 3:00. But I do understand that we have Vice Chair Carney here, she's going to give some public comment, maybe potentially give us a little update on what was done at the meeting.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Sure?
Go ahead.
Okay, on the, I'm not going to say the dates because I don't think I have them right. I attended the Women's Club Prayer Breakfast, which is one of my favorite events, and that was a nice time. We actually had it at the Hall at the Methodist Church this year, so it's nice to see different venues as they continue their work on their clubhouse. On that same day, later that afternoon, I attended the chamber's ribbon-cutting for the new restaurant, Bess, which was a lot of fun. It's an actual resident who decided to open a restaurant, didn't have any prior restaurant experience, or even hadn't even worked at a restaurant, and so he was very gracious to introduce his entire staff, and it was a really nice time, and he put on a nice spread, which was indicative of the food there. I've been twice, and I highly recommend. It's in the old Corfu spot, next to the bookstore. And then that Saturday, I attended the Merry Market on Montecito. That was the kind of official Small Business Saturday event that was primarily focused on the Montecito corridor, which they did a really, really nice job between the pub and all the way down the street, at the end, towards the end of the street, to have vendors and music, and it's really fun to have multiple events, and I feel like I got good feedback that folks felt like it was busy and kind of worth the effort, so that was great. On the 6th, I also attended Winterfest, and I got to stand in for the mayor and light the tree. It was a little bit of suspense because there was a switch, and Santa was counting it down, and I wasn't entirely sure. We had tested whether the switch was actually going to turn on the tree. So, that was extra fun for me because, you know, it worked, but I was a little nervous that there was going to be a little bit of a disappointed crowd when the lights didn't go on. So yes, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Councilmember, go.
Okay, sure. It was November 19th was the Women's Club Prayer Breakfast, and that's one of the ones I look forward to every year as well. It was very well-attended. I was really impressed. The food was great. The quiche was wonderful, Mary. And as it is always, and it was just a great event. And then the next day, I tried to make the Council of Governments meeting in Monrovia at four, but coming up from Long Beach, I got bogged down in that big rainstorm that day, and I got there too late for the meeting, but I did follow up and found that really wasn't much done to report on tonight, so I don't think we've lost much there. On December 2nd, I did attend the latest Library Construction Ad Hoc Committee meeting, where the members of the committee really had a very thorough hour of questioning the people who are building our library. And I think we all came away with a lot of confidence that it's on budget and on time, and a lot of very positive feelings leaving that meeting. Next week, council members, trustees, and commissioners will be invited to do a walkthrough with the library, and I'm kind of looking forward to that because I couldn't go to the last one. December 4th, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. Unfortunately, soon after that meeting started, the commissioners determined that they would move the one discussion item concerning a discretionary demolition permit for 81 Victoria Lane to a date certain in the future, and the meeting ended after just 25 minutes. So that was not too bad. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, so on November 19th was the Natural Resources Committee meeting, and I unfortunately missed that, and I'm working on getting an update on that. On December 6th, I briefly stopped by Winterfest, was sick that day, but wanted to at least see what was going on, and thanks to Councilmember Krebs for filling in for me that evening, and also want to thank the Chamber and Community Services for another great event. Just yesterday, there was a Clean Power Alliance meeting, and we approved the further development of some innovative technology, or innovative energy projects based on hot rock technology. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and switch to city announcements. On Saturday, December 13th, come to Lizzie's Trail Inn and Richardson Museum to celebrate the holiday season with a cup of something warm and a bite of something sweet or savory from 12 to 2:00 p.m. Join the Fire Department's Meet and Greet Santa event this Saturday, December 13th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Bundle up, hopefully you'll be cold enough to bundle up, and celebrate with the Fire Department as they enjoy holiday cheer, goodie bags for the kids, hot cocoa, and hot cocoa for everyone. The Fire Department is also accepting Toys for Tots donations through December 15th, so help bring some smiles and holiday joy to children in need this season. And finally, join us next Tuesday, December 16th, at 5:30 p.m. here in council chambers for our annual city reorganization meeting. We'll be introducing the new 2026 mayor and city council that'll guide us into the new year. All right.
You look very familiar.
Thank you, yes. All right, now we have reports from city staff. Do we have any reports from city staff this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. They got a few items for update for some of our projects. Yucca Basin cleanup project. The contractor mobilized beginning the 3rd of December, started removing the debris basin gate, and then started grading out for access by the equipment to go up there. As you'll see a picture there, that's the equipment that's back in there removing the debris, which they started yesterday. So they've started removing debris. They removed about eight truckloads of material, approximately 120 tons of material has been removed so far. And there's another picture of the piles of the debris, that's at the city yard. So they'll be continuing through this week, and they anticipate being completed next week with the removal of all the debris, and then we'll work on getting the gate back up.
Great.
Next update is Mount Wilson Bailey Canyon Trail restoration. So part of the Bailey Canyon Trail, Tetra Tech, we received a grant for that, and Tetra Tech did a design for restoration and grading work. That's complete, so staff is now in the process of getting quotes to do the work. We'll have to do informal quotes as required by, our attorney says we have to get informal quotes, so our staff's working on informal quotes for that, and that'll proceed once we get the quotes in, and we find a low bidder, we'll get a contract going for them to do that restoration work. And just a little bit of an update on the Mount Wilson Trail. We had a meeting with Forest Service today. They're in discussion on whether or not lifting their closure, and the group has been in the process of restoring, doing rehabilitation work on the trail from the start to Camp Orchard, where the race goes to and turns around. So I haven't seen pictures of that, don't know. They said it's completed and done. I'm not sure that, we're going to, before anything's done, we'll be up there evaluating ourself, take a look at it, make sure it's safe and stuff for people to go, and then the Forest Service still has to determine if they're going to open up there into the trail going forward as well. Then the last update is for the Kirsten Court banner pole installation. The contractor began work excavating the holes for the poles to go in place. They got it excavated. They took measurements to have support cages fabricated, rebar support cages, so they're in the process of fabricating those cages. Because I wasn't sure when I walked up there one day and just saw a big old hole in the ground, thinking, okay, they typically would form the rebar already in there and be ready to pour and put the pole in place. A little different than I'm accustomed to. So they'll be, I got a brief schedule, so 12/11, there'll be demo remaining hardscape and auger in the poor banner pole footings. Grading driveway, curb, and gutter and sidewalks on the 15th. 16th, they'll be forming and pouring the west curb and gutter and the east driveway approach. And then 12/17, form and pour the sidewalk, and then the 19th, slot, patch, and set pole. So they should be done before Christmas, as of right now. We'll keep you updated as any changes materialize, if any. And then I'll field any questions that I may be able to answer at this time.
That'll be quite a Christmas present to have the banner poles back. Any questions from council? Yes, please.
Thank you. On the Mount Wilson Trail, in terms of our coordination with the Forest Service, do they have any review or purview over the portion of the trail that's in the city limits, as you said, from the base to, I think it's about a mile up, to check to make sure that what we've done is appropriate, or is that completely our responsibility?
Strictly our responsibility. They have no purview over anything that's in the city right away, city proper.
And so their involvement, as you said, is to determine whether or not they're going to open their portion of the trail, which starts, you know, some ways up.
Yep, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Along the same lines, on the Bailey Canyon Trail, what's kind of the timeline? People are asking on timeline to have that open. Do you have any, you know, I imagine it's going to be a long time. Can you give us some idea of, are we looking six months, a year, two years?
The portion that Tetra Tech designed, they anticipate no longer than two months, probably.
Okay.
What they designed for the actual grading and trail work for runoff and stuff, to prevent runoff. So they estimated about two months.
But that's just up to the growth.
It's a small portion, yeah.
Yeah, so that won't connect it up to Jones Peak?
I don't know all the trails, so I can't speak to that, sir.
Okay.
I just know this portion of it is about a two-month portion.
And how far, so like the Mount Wilson Trail, how far up do we own on the Bailey Canyon side? Is it similar to a mile up that way, or?
I'm not sure.
It's about a mile? But what we're doing is not even that first mile?
No.
Okay, and is there plans to do it beyond the Grove, or is that not in scope at this point in time?
At this point, it's not in the scope, but we would probably, eventually we would look at all facilities and areas of the city to just rehabilitate.
Got, okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you for the update. I know a lot of our residents in the Lower Canyon are very concerned about Yucca Trail. So my understanding is what we had put in place kept, did its job, kept the larger debris from going down woodland and those roads. Do we have a contingency plan regarding, I don't think there's any rain in the forecast, but if there is rain, is there a contingency plan to get that back up?
Yeah, we would have a plan to put that back up and tarp it off to make sure there's no runoff and stuff, yes.
Fantastic.
Yep, they're ready to go. They got a plan. And understand, this gate that's up there, it doesn't hold everything back. It's large debris. There's always going to be some type of flows coming around because it's not a permanent structure, and you can't put a permanent structure in there because there's no access to get in there. Basically, the access is going through, taking the gate out and going up through there to remove all the debris. So we're looking at some options to minimize the actual dirty of the flow coming out, the mud flows, but there'll always be some sort of flow coming down the roadway.
I think management analyst Carlson referred to it as the chocolate milk that comes through every time.
You'll always have a chocolate milk coming down, but we're going to try to minimize, figure out some ways to minimize the amount of actual larger mud flow, where it's more limited to a thinner debris mud flow.
Understood. That's a great plan. And then finally, with the banner pole installation, does our contractor have, are they sensitive to that's a business area, and they're going to make sure that ingress and egress are open for businesses?
And they've made a notice to the businesses on the 11th that they were going to be doing work, so the surrounding businesses and Valero Gas, for sure.
That's great to know. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other updates from staff? I kind of thought we might. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Parker, Center Honorable City Council. I'm Leila Regan, your friendly neighborhood library director, and I'm here just to remind everyone, this is our last month of programming at the library. So really, our next week is kind of our last week of programming, and then we will take our break along with the city. So the library will be closed from the 25th all the way to January 1st. We will have modified hours on December 24th. We'll be open from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then we'll be open Saturday, January 2nd. So happy new year. And we will be open throughout January, but we will not have any programs, so please come check out all the books and all the things, so we don't have to move them. But we will then be closed to the public so that our staff can relocate back to 440 West Sierra Madre Boulevard in February, March, April, and May. And then we hope to see everyone at our grand reopening Saturday, June 6th, 2026. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any other updates from staff tonight? All right, then we'll move on to presentations. The first presentation tonight, we have the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association.
Hello, I'm Evelyn Schaefer from the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association, and I wanted to let you know that I gave Mike a beautiful picture of Fiesta, our float from last year, which won the Golden State Award. And you have a rendering here of our float this year. I have brought with me three lovely young ladies, who are our princesses this year, and they will tell you all about themselves and about the float this year. So without any delay, we'll start with Gigi.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us to come speak with you about the Sierra Madre Rose Float. My name is Gigi Kretschmer, representing our royal court. We will be telling you about ourselves and about the rose float. When we are done, we will be happy to answer any questions with the help of Eleanor Schaefer, our treasurer. I am 17 years old, and I'm a junior in high school, homeschooled by my mom. I also take concurrent AP college courses at Pasadena City College in Spanish, Latin, and Business. I have lived in Sierra Madre all my life. I live here with my mom, Sonia, my older brother Elijah, and my younger sister Ella. This small mountain town is a remarkable place to grow up, simply because I know so many people here. I run into them when I'm walking my dogs and have conversations with them when I stop into Emmys. It's like an extended family. As a high schooler, I am always getting the question, what do you want to be when you grow up? I find this difficult to answer because there is so much in life to explore. I've always loved the piano, singing, botany, and allergy-free baking. But what all these interests share in common is my desire to never stop learning. My interest in community service also follows these passions. I am a Christian, and my faith is important to me. I find it valuable to consider the needs of other people, especially when we live in a world that is so disconnected. That is what makes the rose float so special. It is in all those real moments when people come together towards a common goal of bringing joy to everyone. I don't have a detailed outline of where I'm going in the future, but I focus on being passionate and disciplined in seeking to find out what God wants for my life. On January 1st, 2026, I want my hair to look perfect, my makeup to be just right, and my outfit to fit beautifully. But what I hope people see most of all is a grateful heart. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Lee Ho, and I'm a junior at Flinners Preparatory School in La Niata. I moved with my parents to Sierra Madre when I was two years old, and quickly, I fell in love with the city and its community. For the past 15 years, my parents, dogs, and I have been living in this beautiful small town. From getting Mother Mousse ice cream after school with my friends, to visiting Memorial Park with my parents for fun festivals, Sierra Madre's cozy atmosphere and kind people make me feel like I live in a movie. When I was around seven years old and volunteering for the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association with my parents, I met the sweetest princess, and I thought to myself, that is going to be me one day. And now here I am, because how can any little girl resist being princess of her hometown? When I'm not studying or playing golf, I love exploring new cuisines and foods, learning about their origins and their ingredients. I'd love to work with food one day, so lately, I've been blogging about different restaurants and foods whilst bringing awareness to food insecurity in Los Angeles. My interest in community service actually began during the pandemic. I began helping the Sierra Madre Library put together take-home craft kits, and from then on, I volunteer there every year. Lately, I've been picking up trash around Sierra Madre in a small project I like to call the Confetti Project. I hope this grows to not only inspire others to keep our city clean, but to also be more considerate of our environmental impacts. Even in the future, I'd love to major in food science and minor in linguistics in a university in California. And even further in the future, I'd like to get my masters in similar fields. But right now, I'm very grateful for this opportunity with the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lacey Kong. I'm 16, and I attend California School of the Arts, San Gabriel Valley, where I train in their ballet and contemporary dance conservatory. It's been a joy growing up here in Sierra Madre all my life with loving parents, siblings, and English bulldog that support all I do. Ever since I was a baby, I've lived in the home my grandfather bought and built back in the 1970s, which made me appreciate how special this community is. From the Wisteria Festival to Fourth of July Parade to Halloween window painting, I love how involved and excited our town gets about these traditions. I still remember in fourth grade, painting on the window of what is now the cancer support community and feeling the joy and getting to be a part of that unique tradition. Because Sierra Madre means so much to me, I wanted to give back to the place that has shaped who I am, and that's why I am proud to serve as a Sierra Madre Rose Float Association princess. Being an SMRAF princess allows me to build meaningful connections, grow as a leader, and reflect the kindness and love our community values through serving others. This past summer, I spent time in Japan to make friendships, teach English, and be an ambassador on behalf of my church, which also meets here in Sierra Madre. I love experiences that allow me to connect with others and learn from different cultures. When I'm not dancing or traveling, I love to bake, whether it's experimenting with random ingredients in the kitchen or making my biggest craving, which is currently chocolate chip cookies with Oreo and marshmallow. Dance has shaped me into the person I am today, as it's one of my greatest passions. I love dancing and performing because of the joy and unity it brings to others. Without dance in my life, I wouldn't be the same. It's taught me confidence, patience, and contentment. Because of my love for dance, I volunteer at my dance studios program for children and youth with special needs, helping create a fun, inclusive environment for them to move and express themselves. It's one of the most rewarding experiences I've had and continues to inspire me to share the love of dance with others. In the future, I hope to pursue a medical science major and attend a four-year college in SOCal. Whatever my path, I hope to encourage others to discover the beauty in science and the impact it has on people's lives. Thank you.
The theme of this year's rose parade is the Magic and Teamwork, selected by tournament president Mark Levens. This year's float, designed by Marcus Politz, captures our firefighters in one of their few moments of downtime together. In a playful design that highlights their camaraderie, this time, our heroes focus their efforts not on putting out a fire, but on pouring syrup onto an enormous stack of pancakes. As a special treat, the ladder bringing all this syrup lifts up to 24 feet tall and swings from side to side. As you can see from the sign at the back of the float, all this is taking place at the traditional pancake breakfast, an event where the community shows its commitment to teamwork in support of the men and women who stand ready to serve at a moment's notice. The pancakes are delicious, the gathering is fun, and the teamwork is, well, part of Sierra Madre's magic.
This year's float will be the 94th parade entry by the city of Sierra Madre in the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association. As one of these six community self-built floats in the parade, we are very proud of our volunteer tradition and of the team that comes together each year to create a float like this. It is a tremendous effort to build and decorate a float solely with volunteers, so we hope that each of you will get involved and join our team this year. Please visit our website to sign up for a volunteer shift in the coming weeks. In addition to this mouth-watering tower of pancakes-
In addition to this mouth-watering tower of pancakes, it is the people that make this year's float so special. The three of us will be riding the float and waving our way down Colorado Boulevard, as always. And joining us will be a crew of actual firefighters from the Sierra Madre Fire Department. Together, we will make a mighty team.
It would not be a rose parade float without the flowers. In total, this float will have over thirty-seven thousand flowers, each one added by one of our amazing volunteers. The fire truck alone will have more than ten thousand red carnations on its sides. The gigantic stack of pancakes will be covered in cornmeal, light-and-dark brown chrysanthemums, and white buttonmums. The syrup will be rust chrysanthemums, espresso roses, and Cafe Del Mar brown roses. And don't forget to wave on parade day at the wonderful Firehouse Dalmatian that will be covered in coconut and black hyacinth root. The mini flower beds include green anthuriums, a variety of different color roses, Song of India, green symbidiums, purple-blue and white irises, green hanging amaranthas, and a variety of greenery. This is going to be the most beautiful pancake breakfast we have ever seen. The beauty, humor, and spirit of this float is a tribute and thank you to our amazing firefighters in Station Forty-One and to all their colleagues around the world who have made such a difference in the lives of our communities. We are so grateful to be a part of their team and cannot wait to share this float with you on New Year's Day. Thank you.
Are there any questions we can answer for you? Well, thank you so much for your wonderful support of the Rose Float Association. We really appreciate everything the city does for us. We couldn't do this without your support.
We thank you for your service and dedication to this. It's an extraordinary effort. And I think it's a pleasure for the city to have a place for us to be one of the few remaining cities that build a float, and it's amazing we've been doing it for ninety-four years.
Yes. I feel like we've been, all of us have been doing it for ninety-four years on January first.
I think our princesses and our volunteers deserve a round of applause.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm relieved because they have to study for finals.
Wow. Before you go, let's go ahead and get a picture of all of you with council here. We've done that in the past.
You're on the picture?
Yes. All right. Our next presentation tonight is recognition of Eagle Scouts from Troop One Ten and Troop Three Seven Three. So I'm gonna go ahead and come up to the podium there. So in 2025, we had two individuals attain the rank of Eagle in Troop Three Seven Three. The first is Mark Garcia, and his Eagle project was building a new shelving unit at Longley Way Elementary School in Arcadia. And one of the interesting facts about him is that he has had a long dedication of service and loyalty to the Troop, Troop Three Seven Three, as well as the community. Mark, are you here this evening? Excellent. Come on up. All right, the second individual from Troop Three Seven Three is Andreas Peterson. And he just earned his Eagle on December seventh. And his Eagle project was building an additional garden for Pasadena High School. And the interesting fact for him was that, I don't know if this is an interesting fact, it's a significant fact, his house was lost during the Eaton Canyon Fire, and he lost everything as a part of it. But, you know, as we've talked about here in the city about resilience, he showed his resilience and ended the year in getting his Eagle Scout. Andreas, are you here this evening? We have to swap. We've got the wrong ones. Here, let's do this. Yeah, Mark, let's get you back up. Get you a picture with the right one. Do we have any of the scouts from One Ten here this evening? All right, I'll go back to the dais and reason. All right, we had three scouts in Troop One Ten that earned their Eagle. On January twenty-third of this year, Giovanni Augustin earned his Eagle, and it was for landscape improvements at the Tournament of Roses Wrigley Mansion. Giovanni earned seventy-six merit badges and volunteered more than a hundred and forty-six hours in the community. On January twenty-eighth, Adrianopoulos, did I get it? All right. Adrianopoulos earned their Eagle, and they were involved in the development of a program to encourage youth involvement and activism within the environmental nonprofit through Jane Goodall's Roots and Shoots Program. He earned thirty-one merit badges and taught leadership within Troop One Ten. And finally, Riley Aquino, on July sixteenth, 2025, earned his Eagle and repaired it. And their Eagle project was repairing fencing and landscaping at Pasadena's Friend and Deed Center. And they earned thirty-two merit badges and were very energized within the troop with their leadership skills. So congratulations to all three of them on obtaining the rank of Eagle. All right, we'll go on to our third presentation this evening. We have Ruben Lubowski of Lombard ODA here to give us a presentation. As a quick disclaimer on this, Ruben and I are former colleagues. We worked together at Environmental Defense Fund in the past. And Ruben reached out to me about a potential EV pilot program that his company is considering. And so after discussing it with staff and asking consent of council, we decided to bring it forward. Mr. Lubowski, please.
Good evening. Mayor Parker, city council members, city staff, hello, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Ruben Lubowski with Lombard ODA Investment Managers, which I'll tell you about, based in New York City. I also teach a class in environmental policy at Columbia. And I want to introduce the idea of a possible pilot project where we would help finance a set of charging stations for electric vehicles in Sierra Madre. And this is really a way for us to start learning about the business of doing these electric chargers, which we're seeing is a potentially very interesting investment opportunity. So I will tell you a bit more about the company and then about the opportunity we're seeing, and then a little bit about the initial ideas for the pilot project, which we can hopefully talk about afterwards. So who we are, Lombard ODA Group is actually a Swiss-based investment firm. It's actually over two hundred years old, has altogether over four hundred billion of client assets. It's one of the best capitalized private banks in the world. It's privately owned, which we think helps provide a longer-term perspective. And that's one of the reasons the bank is very interested in sustainability-themed opportunities. We have a very strong credit rating and, you know, asset base. And with most of those four hundred billion are what's called the private bank. But within that, there's a dedicated seventy-eight billion-dollar asset management company, which manages money for institutional clients, for pension funds, for endowments. And that's where I sit, and the reason I'm there is because there's a very strong focus on sustainability as an investment opportunity. So it's not about just checking the box on, you know, environmental performance, et cetera, but it's really about identifying areas where we think there's gonna be exciting opportunities for investors. And electric charging is one of those areas that I'll tell you about. So our asset management group has about four hundred people, mostly in Europe and Switzerland, but we have about forty-seven people in New York, which is where I'm based, and a few people in Asia as well. This is just showing you, we have, you know, there's a lot of boxes here, but we have very strong sustainability credentials. We were one of the early signatories to this UN Principles of Responsible Investing. Also, we were actually the first private wealth manager that received a B Corp certification, which, as you may know, B Corps are a certification for strong environmental and social performance. And we were the first global asset manager to get the certification in 2019. All right, so that's just high-level background on who we are. A little bit now about the opportunity around electric vehicles. Some of you may know, electric vehicles are growing rapidly around the world. We think the future of transportation will be electric. Actually, the left-hand, you know, bars are just showing you that around the world last year, there were about eighteen billion, sorry, eighteen million passenger vehicles sold that were electric. And the projection is that by 2030, just five years from now, there'll be thirty-nine million sold. So more than double in five years, so it's growing very quickly. The graph on the right shows just the share of total passenger vehicles that are electric right now and projected over time in different countries. The dotted black line is the world getting to forty percent by 2030 in terms of share of vehicles sold. The point here is that, you know, there's a wide dispersion with some parts of the world ahead of the current, you know, kind of moving faster, particularly China and Europe, and others a little bit slower. The US is a bit slower, the blue line getting to about twenty percent. But that's just to introduce the fact that within the US, there's actually a wide variety of performance. So here, we can actually see that California is the red line here in terms of share of new passenger vehicles that are electric now and projected. And California is actually well above the global average, so much closer to Europe and other regions of the world, getting projected to be over fifty percent by 2030 in terms of annual sales that are electric. So the US average is actually the dotted blue line, and we can see that California is ahead of the rest of the US by a lot and actually ahead of the rest of the world as well. So the reason for this and the reason we're really interested in California is because California has very strong policies and incentives for electric vehicles and charging infrastructure. So that's really why we are seeing an opportunity within California. So I actually did a little bit more digging on Sierra Madre in particular. And so not only is California ahead of the rest of the US, but this is some data from the California Energy Commission, which shows for this zip code here, nine-one-oh-two-four, it shows how many of different types of vehicles there are. And you can actually see this nine-twenty-three here, last year. That's total ZEV, which means zero emission vehicles. So that's broken up into different categories. But you can actually see the total in Sierra Madre, the total in all of California, and actually the share here of the total light-duty vehicle fleet is about twelve percent. That's considered ZEV versus seven percent for the rest of California. So actually, Sierra Madre is even ahead of the rest of California. So that's one of the reasons I was excited to explore this as a possible location for our potential pilot project. Some of you may know a lot more about electric vehicles than I do. Since I'm from New York, I actually don't even own a car. My driving is questionable as well. But, so some of you already may know this, but I don't want to belabor this. But I heard that there's basically two kinds of public EV chargers. There's one kind that's called the AC or Level Two chargers, and then there's the DC or Direct chargers, which are considered the faster ones. And they're actually different technologies where the AC ones actually get converted into the DC current within the car, and they're slower. It can take, you know, a whole, like, something like eight hours to fully charge a car overnight. The average charging session is about three hours, so these are slower chargers. The DC chargers are much faster. They, you know, pay like twenty minutes to fully charge. But the reason I'm making this distinction is because there's a difference in terms of the costs, both in terms of the equipment, but also in terms of the usage cost. And I heard that the city actually has an arrangement with Tesla to install some chargers. Those will be of the fast-charging type. And what we're proposing is actually the AC type, which are slower, but they actually have advantages in terms of being more affordable for customers. So here's just some figures showing on the left side. If we actually look at, in a year, what the cost of fueling, the average cost in the US of fueling a car with, you know, regular gasoline is about thirteen hundred dollars, the gray bar. If the other bars are using electric, but depending on the kind of chargers, it's very different. The fast chargers are more convenient if you're going on a long trip, for example, and you want to fully charge. But it's actually more expensive than gasoline, so you're paying a premium for that fast charging. The blue ones are the cheapest. That's if you have a home charger. And the AC or Level Two public chargers are in the middle. So for customers, it can be a complimentary solution to the fast chargers. So just because you may have some fast chargers doesn't necessarily mean you don't also want to complement it with a Level Two, which is what we're proposing. And on the right is just another figure showing that, you know, around the US, the costs of fast public charging have actually been going up over the past couple of years. And California is actually the number-two most expensive state for these fast chargers because of the high electricity, you know, rate cost. So that suggests that affordability is a priority, I'm sure, as you all know, and potentially these Level Two chargers can help with that. Okay?
Is that graph on the left, the US?
Yes, US, yeah.
I would imagine California, that gray bar would be much higher.
Correct. But I think the relative, in terms of, you know, which type of chargers are more expensive, still holds.
Yes, thank you.
Exactly, yeah. So those are US averages. That's data from Bloomberg. So that's just to set the scene, and, you know, electric vehicles are growing. It's estimated that globally, there's gonna be a need for one trillion dollars of investment globally in charging infrastructure for passenger vehicles by 2035. And because of the strong incentives in California, we are interested to explore this as an investment opportunity for our clients. opportunity for our clients. So in terms of what this initial project could look like, what we're proposing is to help finance a small project. We, based on our initial research, we think the ChargePoint chargers would be the most attractive. ChargePoint is the company that, you know, that actually has the biggest share of these Level 2 chargers in the U.S. So it's not a new technology. It's the most widely-used technology. It has the largest and most diverse customer base, over 5,000, you know, big-name clients, over 70,000 chargers installed all around the U.S. The other advantage of ChargePoint is that they are a single provider of the hardware, the software. There's a software where you can manage the chargers online and also have an app for the customers. And also importantly, they provide the maintenance as well. So they're a one-stop shop for the whole package of what we may need. So ChargePoint, but I mean, open to discussion, but seems like the way to go. Also, we've done some research. In particular, we would propose the top-of-the-line Level 2 charger from ChargePoint, which is this 6000 series. The advantage of this is not only is ChargePoint the company that has the biggest network, but actually, this particular charger is good because it is very interoperable, so you don't have to pick what kind of car port your charger is good for. You can actually take your app, tell, you know, scan it, and then it automatically pulls out the charger, charging, you know, nodule that has the right port for your car. So it can serve all the cars, all the major ports. It also has a software that works not only for ChargePoint, but for all the stations, so, and it also has this interesting waitlist feature. So you can get on the waitlist and don't have to wait around. It can send you a message when your, you know, when your slot opens up. So this is just in terms of what we would be proposing to use, but open to discussion. What would the pilot project look like? This is not a project where we're really looking to make a high return. This initial pilot is a small-scale way for us to just basically get experience with how these chargers work, how the installation works, learn about the process, and it's more of a, basically a learning opportunity for us about the investment opportunity here in, well, across the U.S., but in California in particular. So the idea would be if we, to work together to identify a suitable site, if we can find one, and what we would propose to do is basically pay the upfront costs of the equipment, potentially two of these Level 2 stations, which would serve as four different parking spots. Each station has basically two charging ports. We would pay for the installation and the permit costs if we can find an appropriate site. We would also pay the maintenance plan for this. And what we would want from the city is, well, basically the location to, that would be the host location for the chargers. The city would own and be able to control the chargers. The city would also retain the revenues from the chargers. So this is not the way a typical investment would work. I mean, if, I think most private investors are looking to make money from the revenues. Basically, there's two sources of revenue. One is the electricity that usually gets marked up at a premium to the cost, and the city could choose whether it would want to just charge competitively at cost or slightly above, or would try to earn more return. But usually, investors would be looking to profit from that. What we really want is basically more to just learn about the usage rates, learn how the software works, also have the right, and basically what we would require is the ability to be the recipient of the data so that we can then report it to the California Air Resources Board, which is the agency that runs these incentive programs. And they, based on the usage, there's a way to earn carbon credits and incentives under this low-carbon-fuel standard program. So we want to get experience reporting the data, earning, generating the credits, trading them in the marketplace to see what kind of value we can get. And that would be basically what we would be looking for. We could explore other models, also depending on how expensive it's going to be to install this. If it's a very complicated site, maybe we need to explore a different option. But this is roughly what we would be proposing. And potential term of the agreement could be 10 years. That's basically what we've roughly calculated would be the time that with, just with these environmental credits, how much time we would need to basically recoup our initial investment. So we wouldn't be looking really to earn a high ROI, but more learn about this. And hopefully with that learning, we could really identify an interesting opportunity for our investors to scale up in other place, potentially in other places in the city and other places around the state and the country. So thanks very much.
Questions? Yes?
You mentioned there were two sources of revenue. You said, obviously, one is the electricity. Was the second, the carbon trading? Or, okay.
Yeah, these credits. There's also incentives from the state. Some state programs one can apply for, where they actually can cover some of the upfront costs, but that's, that would just be in terms of help with the initial investment. But the two forms of revenue are the electricity and these carbon credits.
And then I guess my other question is, I mean, it sounds like your interest in it as a test program is twofold. One is, you mentioned sort of getting familiar with the credits and the process for that and how much the return might be on that. That obviously would be separate and apart from the city. But also, I assume, you said, usage. I wonder if there is parameters around which you would want that to produce data. I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, for example, the city has electric, an electric fleet, you know, some electric cars in its fleet. You know, would you be looking for more data that would suggest, you know, a average use rate from the public? Or, you know, if the city was to use it for its own vehicles, would that somehow not be the kind of data that you'd want to capture? I'm just trying to get a sense of like what you'd like the usage to represent.
Sure. So it's really around the usage of these chargers that we would install. So the idea would be that we could get a sense of how frequently they're being used, and that's the data that then we would need to be reporting to the Air Resources Board. And that would be it. And also just, we want to go through the process of learning what it takes to do the installation, how the software all works, et cetera.
So, you know, we're in the business of serving the public, and so I'm looking at these chargers and I'm thinking, we've been talking about improving our circulation here in town and maybe having other opportunities, and I'm just wondering if these chargers, because we're a hilly town, could, I don't know if this even exists, have some kind of sidekick for electric bikes? Like, if I was downtown and my electric bike ran out of battery, I knew I'd want an opportunity to charge it somehow to then get back up the hill instead of carrying that thing. And I don't even, I know there's probably not a big investment in that, wouldn't be a big return, but again, we're in the business of serving the community. So I don't know if that's even an option, some kind of sidekick on this where someone can charge a bike or scooter or even a golf cart, I don't know. You know, I'd be willing to pay a buck on an app just to, you know, top, get a few, you know, few amps or whatever in my bike, right, if I had one. So I, I'm just thinking, does ChargePoint have that type of option? Does anybody have that type of option? Because I know it's probably not a big moneymaker, but again, we're here to make sure that our public's being served.
I think the ChargePoint chargers are for cars, but that's something we could explore.
Yeah, I mean, that's obvious.
That's something we could explore, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
But certainly, we can look into it.
I just want to be clear. You have an ROI objective yourself, and that is, it can't be captured through the revenue for the electricity. We're getting that. So it's going to be strictly for the carbon trading then, right? We don't get that?
So for this pilot, we're not looking really to get a high ROI. We're just looking to eventually recoup the investment.
Says something about, yeah, recouping the investment.
Yeah. But it's more about to get the experience.
That would be coming from the carbon trading then.
Yes, but we don't expect that would really generate a competitive ROI on its own. It would just be more for us to learn about it. And then if we scale this beyond this initial pilot, then we would certainly want to get an attractive ROI, yeah.
You just answered my next question. Because we, we've had a pilot come before us before and it didn't seem much like a pilot, but it sounds like you want a true pilot. And then if there's an expansion, there'd be some type of revenue sharing?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be after 10 years, right? At least the proposal you have is that it would be, 10 years would be the, we'd have a contract for that at set rates and all of that.
For this one, exactly. And the charges would be on by the city, yeah.
But if we wanted to expand before 10 years?
Certainly.
Those would be outside the pilot?
Exactly, yeah. We would, hopefully in a year or two, we can explore that and actually, or even, you know, start working on that from the beginning.
And I'm sure you're aware, just because I got on my ChargePoint site while you were talking, or my app while you were talking, there are ChargePoint sites or, you know, availability fairly nearby. So I mean, I assume that, you know, like, you've done sort of a little bit of research as to sort of whether these particular sites are attractive based on the location versus, you know, the ones that are in existence today? Or are you just solely looking for sort of the experience of having two in our town and figuring out what that, what that would look like?
That's basically it, but my understanding is that there's still potentially some sites that don't have chargers, where it could potentially be, you know, good for the city and the community to have them.
Yes, for sure.
Any other questions? So, go ahead, please.
I was going to say, in terms of, I mean, next steps, if there's interest, then we could actually start exploring a potential site. We would have, we've identified an installation partner that would then, you know, review it, and then we could develop an actual cost estimate and present that.
So this is a presentation item, but I still think it's something to give direction. I think we can, do we typically give direct, well, we haven't given direction on presentations.
For a presentation item, it'd be appropriate to provide direction, to ask questions. So you could provide direction to staff along with your colleagues if there's a majority to agenda something for the future.
Great, great.
If we give direction, would it be appropriate to have public comment before direction or the presentation?
That's the, so if there's a discussion, then we're going to have to have public comment, but you can always provide direction for items not on the agenda, and obviously that you don't need public comment for items not on the agenda. So no, you don't need to have public comment.
I think, based on that question, I think it would be prudent for us to solicit public comment, so if we can just take a moment here and see if there's any public comment for anyone in the audience here tonight. We've got one. Mr. Lloyd, if you could please come to the microphone for that.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Parkhurst, John Lloyd, East Laurel. I'm a member of the city's Transportation Subcommittee, and one of the things we're, of course, very interested in is greening our transportation system. A pilot project like this, I think, is worth some serious consideration. And one of the things that came to my mind, knowing friends of mine who have EVs, is that folks would come to town and, because they'd know on their app there was a charging station here, and while their car was charging, they could shop or, you know, spend money in town. So it's just something to consider. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Are there any other public comments for tonight? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. This isn't a formal discussion, but why don't we move into a discussion? Thoughts from fellow council members?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, from the beginning, and I'm not, I'm not trying to throw any shade on the Tesla stations, but from the beginning, I was, I was very interested before understanding that that's going to be the normal connection going forward of having a more robust charging option for our residents or visitors. So I'm, I'm in favor of us exploring this. You know, I think first step should be, is there, is there a viable?
Sure.
Site? I think Behind the Playhouse would be a great thing to think about. But, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of at least exploring this because of the accessibility to other types of vehicles and that type of, that type of option.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo what Councilman Garcia said in terms of also some variety in cost structure as well, because I think they will, you know, the longer, the slower chargers are cheaper, as mentioned. And I would just say that I will never turn down something that people want to give the city for free, so I mean...
I was going to say that very thing. It's very much motivates me on this, but, you know, obviously, we're ahead, we're ahead of the curve in our city in terms of the need for the EV chargers. So I think we can make a really good case that it's for serving the public.
Fantastic. Well, I think people know where I stand on this, since I did bring this forward. So, yes, then I think we've got consensus here, Mr. City Manager, to continue discussion and bring it back to council at an appropriate time.
Yeah, and we'll connect with Mr. Lebowski and start trying to identify certain sites in town that we can present to the city council for further discussion and consideration.
Fantastic. All right. Excellent. All right, then we will close that item and we'll continue on. So thank you, Mr. Lebowski, for coming here tonight. We'll continue on with, next item on the agenda, which is for public comments, which is public comment for items not on the agenda. I will just note that we typically have, we typically highlight the Public Participation Code of Conduct. It is on the back of all the comment cards. And so now we will open up for public comment on items not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards for items not on the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, there is one speaker card from Mary Carney.
Ms. Carney.
Good evening, Mayor Parkhurst and Mayor Protem Gribbs and City Council. Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. And I'm going to wear a different hat for just a quick minute. On behalf of the Women's Club, I really want to say thank you for the comments you made tonight. It's always nice to know that what we've done has been appreciated and enjoyed and looked forward to. And so, thank you again so much for that. And I'm switching hats now because, as you know, I'm on the Senior Commission. And we've been doing Senior Commission kinds of things, and that's going along just fine. But over the Thanksgiving weekend, I got a call. And the call said, "We have learned that there is an 82-year-old individual living alone in the canyon, and when Mary's Market is closed, which is where he gets fed, there's no food. This individual goes two days a week without food." Now, and the question was, "Do we have any in-town transportation?" And I said, "No, it's, you know, been under consideration. We thought we had something last spring, but it turned out not. So no, we don't have any in-town transportation that somebody can call." I said, "Well, what about Meals on Wheels?" You know, there is the program at the Harthouse. I said, "The program at the Harthouse is from Monday through Thursday, and if you sign up, you can get a box that you can take home with you for Friday, but there's no food support for Saturday or Sunday." Now, a year ago, when I was cashiering at the Women's Club, a resident from 70 Esperanza just started talking about the terrible conditions there, and I took them to the Senior Commission, and the Senior Commission kind of took it on. And then January last year, and thanks to Ed Garcia, who stood up and said, "Well, yes, you know, we bought the land for 70 Esperanza," you know, and so they started looking into it. And thanks to that particular resident, the history of that particular project had fallen off the city's radar because it didn't get digitized. Now, that's been taken care of, so it's back on the radar. And in looking into things, they discovered that the new owners that had bought it three years ago had been making rent increases beyond what was allowable in this, in LA County. So they were able to roll back, you know, things there. But the issue that I was concerned about is that some of our seniors are at the point of food or rent. And that's not how I think we should be in Sierra Madre. And as far as I'm concerned, going two days without food is not acceptable in Sierra Madre. Not having senior transportation is not acceptable in Sierra Madre. Not having Meals on Wheels is not acceptable in Sierra Madre. The senior... The senior, senior community, the community services is working on this, but we'll be needing volunteers to run a Meals on Wheels program. And I'd just like to leave you with that information and thought. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carney. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other comment cards for items not on the agenda?
No other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
And did we receive any emails for items not on the agenda?
The City Clerk's office did not receive any emails today.
Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, will you read the items on the consent calendar by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council this evening are several items on the consent calendar. Item A is the consideration of city council meeting minutes for the November eighteen special city council meeting. The staff's recommendation is that the city council approve minutes. Consent B is the second reading of ordinance one four eight six, amending chapter one fifteen point twenty-four of Fire Code and adding chapter fifteen point twenty-five California Wildland Urban Interface Code of Title Fifteen Buildings and Construction of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And this is second reading. Staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-six. Consent item C is second reading of ordinance fourteen eighty-eight, approving a municipal code text amendment and recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter seventeen point seventy-two signs of Title Seventeen Zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. This is also a second reading. Staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt ordinance fourteen eighty-eight. Consent D is resolution twenty-five dash sixty-three, accepting the State Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Agreement Grant Year Twenty Twenty Four of fifty thousand dollars, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute all related grant documents, plus approving a fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six budget appropriation of one hundred and forty thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars, representing previously accepted grants from fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three of the twenty twenty-four grant. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash sixty-three. Consent item E is resolution twenty-five dash sixty-nine, amending the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six budget, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand in the eternal, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the Internal Service Fund Personnel and Risk Management Division for Personnel Legal Expenditures. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five sixty-nine. Resolution twenty-five dash seventy-one is approving certain demands. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash seventy-one. And twenty, resolution twenty-five dash seventy-two is approving a fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six budget appropriation of fifteen thousand two hundred forty-one dollars in the Sierra Madre Police Department Evidence Fund. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash seventy-two. Consent item H is the last item on the consent calendar. It is consideration of resolution twenty-five dash seventy-three, approving a grant of easement to Southern California Edison Company. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve resolution twenty-five dash seventy-three. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. Staff is available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so we'll start at the top. Do we have any questions on consent item A? Consent item B? C? D? E? F? G?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the appropriation is for fifteen thousand two hundred forty-one dollars, and the quote is for ten thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. I just wanna, I think maybe there's two things going on here, moving funds and then potentially approving the purchase of this, I know it's not discussion, but this wonderful piece of equipment that our men and women can use and help their safety. So my question is, is the other, extra funds for anything other than the unmanned aerial system or drone? And is it, are we also considering buying, like, the extended warranty plan? I don't usually do that myself, but I think I'm a little risk averse when we're talking about taxpayers' dollars and just, what's the extra fund for?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. So the extra funds, it would be for two additional indoor drones?
That would be these?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So it would be a total of three?
I didn't read the last page, apparently.
And also, it's actually closer to eleven thousand with tax.
Yeah, okay.
So would these replace our existing fleet of drones?
Thank you for the question. Yes. So we have three drones right now that are about seven years old, they're obsolete. The batteries that we currently use expand, so we're replacing the batteries all the time. So with technology and the progression with it, we need to replace them so we could put better use for officer safety. I mean, a perfect example was after the Eaton fires, during the Eaton fires, we need drones that are, that could be flown in inclement weather, sprinkling and kind of give us an assessment of what we have. It'll also have a two-way speaker, so when we have bear incidents, we could actually communicate, probably scare off a bear with the, with the new drones. So we need to upgrade our fleet of drones. They're old.
And with the commercial drone, this is, this is, tell us, like, what is included in it? What is part of that drone?
Thank you for the question, but I do not know technology very well when it comes to the drones. Someone that could probably answer the question, it's a gentleman that's back here, Grant Cadzell, who has a lot more expertise with the drone system. I know the new ones that we're getting have the infrared sensor. They could fly in inclement weather. The fly time is a lot longer. Lighting, and then they have the two-way communication.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So, yeah, just to follow up, because I did see on the invoice for the more heavy-duty drone that has the heat vision and all that, we have three extra batteries on that invoice. Will we be getting additional batteries for the two indoors as well? Or is that just as expenses come up, we'll supplement? Because you said the battery, batteries wear out over time, and we'd need to replace them?
Thank you for the question. More than likely, we'll get extra batteries also for the two additional.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions on item G? Any questions on item H?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So this was with respect to the easement being granted to Edison. On topic, on the, for the work that needs to be done behind Taylor's for the Tesla charging station. And I just, it wasn't clear to me from the drawing exactly where this was located, and I know the post office has the mailboxes and there is, you know, a fair amount going on, you know, just off of Baldwin, and I just wanted to orient myself as to where this easement is, because we're, we are, you know, committing to not putting, you know, structures and planting boxes and things on top of this easement, so I want to make sure it's, you know, fitting within what is going on there already.
Yeah, so this easement will be to the northern part of the project, and it's just for their underground equipment, so they're cabling and stuff, and then they have to have, be, like you said, anything that gets, they wouldn't allow anything to be built over it, because if they have to go in and repair it or replace it, then they have to be able to have unfettered access to it. So this is the first step in the project, so they're, they need the easement to then go in and do their installation of all their equipment, their underground cable and their equipment that'll then power the Tesla project. The mailbox will be remaining in place. The project itself actually comes up to the eastern edge of that, so the one drive-through, where if you were coming north on Baldwin and going in to be able to dump off through your driver's side thing, that will no longer be available. The project actually is budding up to that, but the other side will still be available.
South, the south.
Yep, going southwards will still be available to dump off the mail.
Okay, thank you.
So is the easement just south of the driveway that goes?
Yeah, in between, yeah. That's about what it looks like. And then, just a brief update on the project, what I've got from the Tesla people is a twelve-to-sixteen-week construction time. Once they, Edison probably gets their stuff going, and then their project would be a twelve-to-sixteen, estimated twelve-to-sixteen weeks.
Great. Any other questions on item H?
No, that assuages my concern.
Great, thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards for items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards submitted, and the City Clerk's office did not receive any emails.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any discussion on any of the consent agenda items?
No, I'm excited about this drone for our, for our staff. I think I spent forty-five minutes on YouTube researching this thing, and, I mean, just for the search and rescue part of it, I'm excited that we're gonna have this for our residents, you know, given what we know, what can happen, and also the wildlife and any other situation that might occur. So I'm really excited about this for our, for our staff.
Yeah, I would concur. This is a good move forward. I'm glad we're getting a commercial-level drone, so. Excellent. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, we'll move on to discussion items. We have one discussion item on the agenda tonight, and that is a report discussion and direction on the local transportation program. Senior Analyst Carlson, it is yours.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Staff is prepared to provide an update and answer questions regarding Sierra Madre's local transportation program. Staff is requesting that the city council direct staff to reject the most current proposal from Transdev, reconvene the Transportation Ad Hoc Subcommittee, and reissue a request for proposals based on the Subcommittee's new recommendations. Over the past two years, the Subcommittee has worked diligently to improve local transportation. The Subcommittee was successful in lobbying LA County Metro for the return of the Line two sixty-eight bus. The Subcommittee also provided recommendations for an RFP that was issued to further enhance our local transportation. Transdev is a company that was formerly known as First Transit. They were our existing contractor, and they were the only sole qualified proposal that the city received on the RFP. However, the cost for the services that were sought exceeded the city's transportation budget. Staff worked with Transdev to find a financially sustainable agreement, but on October seventeenth of this year, Transdev provided its final offer on a program that had even significantly reduced hours and services. The final offer would only fund the local transportation program for five years. Staff is requesting that the city council direct the reconvening of the Subcommittee. We will discuss various lessons learned during the process, and we will issue a new RFP at the beginning of next year. Staff feels much can be gained by issuing a new RFP. The Subcommittee has already effectively identified the city's needs. ADA compliance will be included with the new program, and staff has identified additional considerations that are expected to lower costs for a new program, which could include the purchasing or leasing of our own vehicles, consideration of internal part-time staff to run a portion of the program, and we've also discovered some new contractors that will be reached out to directly for the RFP process. So in summary, the staff is requesting direction from the city council to reject the final offer from Transdev, reconvene the Subcommittee, and reissue an RFP at the beginning of next year. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Senior Analyst Carlson. Questions?
Maybe, maybe two?
Please.
So firstly, when the two sixty-eight came back, that was fantastic. But I've noticed since that, since that time, I haven't seen Metro Micro around, maybe because of demand, or is it gone?
No, they are still here. In fact, I've actually seen them a little bit more than in the past, and I think they're getting a little bit more organized with their virtual stops. So when I'm traveling from my home and back, there is a virtual stop right there at Mountain Trail in Sturtevant that is pretty heavily used.
Okay, great. And the other question is, since, you know, the east side of our town is not served at all with any public transportation, is Transdev open to a short-term interim contract? Or do they want to have the full, however many years it is, contract in order to have that type of price?
One of the efforts that I made when I was negotiating with them was to expand from a three-year to a five-year to try to get the costs down. I'm under the impression the, them providing the vehicles is a real cost driver and a hindrance to what we can sustainably do into the future, so that's why I want to kind of take another look at the vehicles. Metro Micro will still serve the east side, so it's not entirely cut off. But I've kind of gotten to the point where I believe we should cut bait with Transdev and look forward to something else.
Thank you. So you mentioned that the cost of the vehicles is something that is a concern. Do you think that'll change if we go out to RFP? And are there other vehicle options that could be considered out there?
We are currently continuing discussions with Enterprise Fleet Rentals, or Lease Program. So that is an option, and I was talking to them about a hundred percent electric shuttle buses, and they provided me with a couple of options for that. I believe that even a purchase would probably be cheaper for us to do. However, we do have maintenance that is, that would come with a purchase, not so much a lease, that I wanted to try to avoid our guys taking on a whole bunch of extra new automobile maintenance.
Are there other vehicles in other cities that we might be able to learn from and that could potentially serve the needs for the city of Sierra Madre?
Yeah, one of the more promising and exciting discoveries was a program in Whittier that's using another company called Circuit, and they have some pretty interesting smaller EV automobiles. And so that would be someplace that we would also look at. We could also re-approach the city of Pasadena and Arcadia. They weren't interested when we first approached them, but we can try again.
When was the last time that we had our shuttle bus running in the city?
I believe it was twenty twenty-three, probably about the middle of the year, and then it just would not, our mechanic, Donnie, was not able to revive it.
To follow up on Councilmember Garcia's question, are there other options that we might be able to consider for temporary transportation? I want to be thoughtful of Chair Carney's comment about the individual in the canyon that doesn't have transportation and is not going, is going without two meals a week. Is there something we could even do in the interim that wouldn't include Transdev that would be able to service particularly our senior community and make sure that they get fed?
I can certainly take a look at it. It would require an RFP, just like what we're proposing to do, but if it was a much simpler, smaller, you know, way to get to the bigger plan, then we can take a look at that. It could be something as simple as a taxi or a diner ride, you know, kind of system like we had many, many years ago, that could go to specific homes. We can look and qualify seniors or low-income, and we can go that route too, if we can get something in place as quick as possible.
And I guess that's another question, is if we think about this in two timeframes. One timeframe is something that is a bridge, and the other is to get a more permanent program, considering it's been, how long has the Transportation Subcommittee?
Over two years.
And the Transportation Subcommittee's been meeting for how long?
Over two years.
Yeah, so we've been struggling with this for over two years. I'd hate for another two years to go by. What's the thought process on being able to get to some resolution on this?
Well, fortunately, the Subcommittee did a tremendous amount of work, like I said, to identify the needs and to provide guidance on the original RFP. So a lot of that work has been done. We will re-approach with the Subcommittee with some of the new thoughts, the new ideas, the possible acquisition of a vehicle instead of having the contractor provide it. So I think we are pretty far along, and we're not restarting from the beginning.
And how does this fit into our overall transportation plans for the city and efforts that we have going forward?
It was two weeks ago... It was two weeks ago, with the assistance of California Consulting, that we were able to successfully apply for a grant for a comprehensive circulation program. And that's with Caltrans. So we feel pretty good about our application. We actually did use a lot of the materials that we were, from the Cal Berkeley Safe Trek Study within our application. And I think that put us in a good spot. We'll see how that goes. That's about $300,000 to develop a plan. And we would also have a citizens advisory group if we are successful getting that, that funding.
And when would the decision on that grant be made?
Don't know off the top of my head. June, June, yeah. Claire, Director Lynn is assisting with that.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes?
Okay, well, we, I had the good fortune of serving with Mayor Parkerst on this Subcommittee, and it was a great learning experience. And you've done a fine job, Mr. Carlson, in leading it. And this is very demoralizing and disappointing, and not because of what you have done or what the committee has done. But we just got into a situation where we couldn't get our, the negotiation to budget any farther. It was very frustrating. So I share Councilmember Garcia's concern about the short term. We've had a lot of feedback from particularly seniors.
Do we have a question, or should we put that into?
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies. Go ahead.
So my question is, and we've talked about this in the Subcommittee, and we've kind of dismissed it, could we use the funds that we now have available in the short term, some of them, as a stopgap measure to subsidize Lyft or Uber, just as a stopgap measure? Are those funds, can we use them that way?
I will have to confirm that. I understand the city of Monrovia had a program like that. I got feedback from my colleagues in the city of Monrovia to be careful, because that program became so popular that they expanded their Prop A funds, and that's what I want to double check on. And it hit their general fund pretty hard before they realized what had happened. But that's something we can look at.
So that's a place we could kind of learn from, if we were to do that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Nope, mine recovered. Thank you.
Great. All right, then we'll go ahead and open this item for public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have two speaker cards. The first is from Joe Reed, followed by Mr. John Lloyd.
Good evening. I want to thank you that you are, there is still be, work being done on this issue. Because the appearance to me and approximately 20 other, mostly seniors, who regularly use the Gateway Bus and/or the Dial-A-Ride, we've all been left in the lurch without any return of comment. And I was particularly dissatisfied that no one contacted me after I came here and addressed this issue about three months ago. Some, a few details, I would like to clarify that it's not 2023. The actual date is, is early, the beginning of July 2024. That's when the Gateway Bus disintegrated mechanically, mechanical failure. And Dial-A-Ride, I guess, was also terminated at that point. It's been very unsettling to see that those services have still been promoted by the city. Even right to the, to the article about this meeting tonight, where they act like these, these are still part of the service offered here. The Metro 268 bus does not go to Ralph's supermarket. The extra distance to the Sierra Madre Villa Station is not feasible for elderly carrying groceries, especially a few regulars with profound disability in their 80s and 90s, one of whom, by the way, has, is now deceased. And I believe in part due to the stress that they felt from, from not being able to go down and get food. The use of the Metro Micro requires crossing Foothill Boulevard, and that is a prohibitive challenge for seniors. In the last year of operation, there were at least a dozen frequent riders each making multiple trips per week. So I would very much appreciate any, even stopgap measures that could be implemented. And again, I thank you that, that, because my, my impression was that you all were just hoping that we'd just forget about it, and it was dead.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All right.
Mr. Lloyd is the next speaker.
Hello again. I wanted to say that as a member of the Transportation Subcommittee, I share the frustration that this has taken so long. And, you know, I, I really thought we had a great route proposed for TransDev. And I'm sorry that it's just not going to be financially possible. I think, I would urge support of the staff report, because I think we need to have a transportation solution that's financially sustainable. And trying to run something for five years and then not knowing if we'll be able to continue it, would, would, we'd run into the same situation that we're in right now, five years from now. So we really need to avoid that, I think, and look at something that's going to be financially sustainable. I also think there is a real possibility for the acquisition of electric shuttles. And that, generally speaking, with those vehicles, the maintenance costs are lower than with internal combustion vehicles. You don't have oil changes and things of that sort. So it, it can help with keeping maintenance costs low as well. So I wanted to urge council to support the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Any further comment cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back for discussion. Thoughts?
No, please go ahead.
Yeah, so if we decide that we want the Transportation Subcommittee to reconvene, and I kind of feel as though that's how we're leaning, we would lean, I would really urge in the interim that we reach out to our neighbors graciously and say, we need a stopgap. And I'm not saying five years, right? Just while our Transportation Subcommittee is reconvening and coming up with a long-term solution. But we do have money that we've not been spending within these Prop A funds that we probably need to spend. So I'm hoping that one of our neighbors at least, or some other option, can be a stopgap while the Transportation Subcommittee reconvenes. That's, that's really it.
Great, thank you.
You're suggesting the shuttle service in another city?
Well, potentially, you know, asking Arcadia, can, can we use your Dial-A-Ride? Or Pasadena, can we use your Dial-A-Ride or your bus system? Just as we're trying to figure this out, because we've been woefully inadequate for our transportation for our differently abled and elderly.
You're thinking like a short-term contract?
Short-term, absolutely. And it's my understanding, we wouldn't have to go to RFP if it's some type of contract like that. We could just, you know, for, for a little bit of time, jump onto this while we're coming up with a long-term solution.
I also wonder if we could use some of the funds. Again, that's what I was thinking too. Like, we have these funds that have been accumulating, and we don't want to commit to spending them and depleting them over time for unsustainable contract. But we do have some availability. And, you know, it seems like there's a number of different things that could be used for, right? Like, we could also figure out a way to better promote or, or connect our residents with the Micro and, and, you know, maybe create more convenient virtual stops, you know, that, that Management Analyst Carlson was mentioning. So I do think there's probably options for at least, you know, some interim relief, because it has been a long time. I also think that if we were to reconvene the Subcommittee, we should have a very specific sort of mandate. You know, I think, it sounds like a lot of the, the work has been done in terms of the gathering of information. So I think it should really be a limited, you know, scope of, of direction for them to really just find a long-term solution and get the RFP out and, and sort of give them some, some pretty tight direction and short timeframes.
I mean, to that point, I think we have some new information that has happened in the interim, such as that flyer that Management Analyst Carlson held up. So obviously, they'd want to entertain some of these new, new information. But yeah, I agree with limiting the scope.
From a short-term perspective, the, I'm intrigued by your idea. I still think maybe we could talk about subsidizing through Uber in limited circumstances. The Micro requires just basic capacity to use.
I think Uber and Lyft do as well, I believe.
Well, there is a phone call that you can use for Uber and Lyft.
Yeah, but Micro does, is a little bit more complicated for seniors who are not as technically fluent. So I, I think it makes great sense if that weren't an issue.
Right.
But it is an issue.
Or interim taxi service. I mean, I know we have a number of folks in town whose business is ferrying folks to, you know, the airport. I don't, I mean, it seems like there's people in town who have a business of, of driving that almost, you know, like a taxi. And, you know, is there a way to harness some of that and, you know, subsidize fares? And that would be a little bit more, you know, that would probably be more traditional calls and, and more, you know, door-to-door type service. So I mean, I know that would sort of be a win-win, right? Because we could be supporting local businesses along with providing transportation.
Yeah, I mean, for that, I mean, we heard the story about Monrovia. There would obviously need to be a need, right? It would have to be need-based, so we don't blow the whole budget.
Right. No, I think, yeah, to, to the point that we're making before. I mean, obviously, we have a history of the ridership of our, you know, our coach. And so I would suggest that we start with sort of that cohort, as we've heard about tonight.
Yeah. And I would concur with the direction that, you, a short-term need along with a long-term development, and make this a very focused and, and try to expedite it as much as possible. So.
And not to at all say anything bad about the Subcommittee, but to the extent that this, that it would be more streamlined and efficient and faster to work through these alternatives at the staff level, and then just bring them directly to us for, for, for sign-off. I think I would be in favor of that versus, you know, you know, working to convene a committee and, you know, have meetings and things like that. If that's, if that's appropriate, I think I would be in favor of streamlining that process, at least for this interim stopgap solution. And then, and then have the committee focused on the long-term solution.
I'm comfortable with that. I think that, that makes a lot of sense. And I think even with the, the longer term, I think if, if staff can, can develop it and then get the, the feedback from the Subcommittee, I do think that there is some substantial knowledge from overtime. And then we've got some experts like Mr. Lloyd and, and Mr. Romero on that committee that have some, you know, Mr. Romero could probably tell us tonight, the, the ridership of 268. He's, he's staying very much on top of that. So I think that, that input will actually be helpful in it. But I do think that we need to really stress the, the speed in this. Great. Mr. City Manager, do you have sufficient direction to, to take this forward?
I believe so, but I would still prefer a motion from the council, just highlighting some of those specific areas that you'd like us to pursue.
Great. Who would like to propose a motion?
So I move that we reject the most current proposal from TransDev. We have a reconvening of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee with a focus on a long-term solution for transportation in the city.
And then the short-term?
And then also that, without, well, not needing the input of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee, we develop a, a short-term stopgap solution, if we can. And with the goal, with the Subcommittee to develop a new RFP for transportation services ASAP.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that sufficient direction?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, then we'll move on to our items for future agendas. Does anybody have any items for future agendas?
So while we were talking, I was whispering in the ear of our city attorney, wondering what our limit was for RFP, things that have to go to RFP. And he was surprised to see that our limit is $2,000 per ordinance. So I think we should revisit that amount and probably increase it beyond, beyond $2,000. So.
Okay, all right. That seems to make a lot of sense to me. Any other items for future agenda? All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting until next Tuesday, December 16th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you all next week.